All right, bringing tonight's meeting to order for Tuesday, January 22nd. And as we start out every school meeting, we will start by reading the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. We provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Midora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Lardini.
All right.
I'm sitting in for Pam Kinahan. My name is Roxanne Verdel.
Nice to have you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right, hold on. So I'm still trying to get the right document to pop up here, which is the gift. Give the thing to the gift. All right, so thank you. So we do have a gift to vote on, and that is in the amount of $1,075. They are both, one, the $1,000 is going to Freeman, and $75 is going to the district as a whole. The gift comes Karen O'Neil, $1,000, which is a Snowflakes/Season of Giving 2018. And then Looters Environmental, $75 donation to the district. So in total, that is $1,075. Do we have a motion to accept those generous donations?
Make a motion to accept the generous donations, as stated.
Second on that?
I second the generous donations motion.
Much better said. Good job.
Done for the night.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's accepted. So moving on to my portion of events, which is the town manager search update, which I'm trying to think, we met a few weeks before, I think, the holiday break. So we were just getting into the process. We just, we made some recommendations to the town, and I believe it is now public knowledge as far as who ended up getting it. So he was Rock, I'm sure I'm forgetting his name, not Rocco, but I'm trying to figure his name. Brutus, thank you. Thank you for the citizen. Brutus was the DPW director and had very wide-ranging experience. So he was one of the finalists. We presented along with, we had two other names. We interviewed eight folks in total. We had probably 35 or so resumes that we went through, so tremendous interest. I had never gone through this process before. We were getting resumes from Florida, everywhere you could possibly imagine for this. So I don't know what the process is where people find out about this, but it was really interesting. So, and it was very, in the interviews we did, so we broke it up over two different nights, or two different afternoons essentially, and it was an hour interview time with each person, so eight hours of interviewing time in total. So it was a lot of very interesting, a lot of very qualified people, a lot of people that have very good ideas. So as I said, we presented the three folks to the board of selectmen. They made their choice last week, and I believe he's on the, I think he's already started as far as I know. So he's got a pretty interesting background, so it is someone that hopefully will be, do a nice job for us. Myself and Michael, for the King Phillips School Committee, were both part of this process. So we sort of asked him school-based questions, so he seemed to understand the need and our need, and gave a little bit of the background. We did this all to candidates, obviously, but we gave a background as far as what we were looking for, what our needs were, the nice relationship we had developed with both Jack and the town as a whole, and we want to keep that going. So everybody seemed to understand that, so that was very nice. So we look forward to working with him. He seems like a very nice person, and hopefully that should be good. And then, this isn't on the, my portion of it, I think I mentioned when I was here last time, we were trying to get a meeting scheduled with all the school chairs. Does it say this number?
You mentioned that, yep.
So we actually get that arranged. So that is on February 7th, we're going to get together, and just sort of a general meeting, just to get some, just to keep the working relationship going. I think it's what I explained last time. So I'll let you know after, when our next meeting is in February, as far as what that, what the outcome of that is, and if anything develops from it. But hopefully something on a semi-regular basis we meet, so. That's all I had.
Okay.
Moving on, Ingrid.
All right, the first thing we have tonight is a budget update, and so Todd Hassett, our business consultant, is here to present the budget update.
Would you mind? Thank you. Maybe I'll actually sit where Roxanne is and speak to you.
Roxanne, you owe me to do that. You've got to take notes.
Oh, good point.
Shifting.
Okay. Getting bounced again. Where shall I sit?
Here, sit here.
You can sit in Jeff's seat.
Yeah, I'll sit in Jeff's.
He only has a head cold, so just don't sit in Jen's seat.
And don't get anywhere near Jen.
I have the normal virus.
I'm fine.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Just as an overview, I'm sure the committee's well aware of our budget, but this is more for the audience. Our current FY '19 overall operating budget is approved by the town as at $12.26 million. This chart shows that the lion's share of the resources the committee has allocated to instructional, direct instructional services to students, nearly 80 percent. The large green portion of the pie going around clockwise from there, the pale blue is other services. And each of these wedges I'll speak about in a moment, which is largely health and transportation, food service. The darker blue is our operations and maintenance and technology infrastructure. We have a modest amount for what we refer to as, in the state DESI world, as fixed charges, which is typically insurance and some leases and odd items that fit into this category. The outplaced tuitions is just under 2 percent. That's the pale one right at 12 o'clock. And then the sort of tan color, just under 4 percent, represents the district administration. So I'll, as I say, I'll go through each one of the wedges, referring to each of the state codes, the 1,000 series. District admin includes the superintendent's office, the business office, HR, district legal, and no longer district technology. This year, the DESI has changed some of the function reporting codes for us, primarily in the technology area. So our, what we previously categorized in this area has been moved to the operations and technology infrastructure section of the state codes. So you notice in the box on the right, a year ago, we expended $604,000, and this year, our budget is under $500,000. So great budgeting by the superintendent, but the reality is, you know, over $100,000 was moved to another section of the budget, which we'll see a little later on. At this point, we're projecting that most of this is fixed expenses. We expect most of it will be expended. The one real variable that, to date, we're tracking well on is the use of legal services. So as we get close, as we go through the year, and I provide the committee future updates, likely if that sustains, then the overall balance, unexpended balance, will increase a little bit due to unused legal services. Instructional services, again, this is nearly 80 percent of our operating budget, the 2,000 series. This includes the principals' offices, all of our teaching services, professional development for all of our instructional staff, the materials for the students, guidance and psychological services. We, at this point, are all settled out with staffing and most of the service requirements for our students. We are tracking a little high in terms of special education, substitute and aid services, but at this point, I'm still projecting a modest, about a $9,000 unexpended balance at year-end. And as I say, the substitute area is really what we're keeping a close eye on. I think that's it for instruction. We have modest adoption funds this year, which is compared to prior years, and everything seems to be tracking fairly well. We certainly have, in terms of technology, there's not a bullet here, but certainly building and instructional technology is, the needs are more than our resources or I should say, our allocated resources at this point. So that's something that will possibly be a theme going forward in future budgets. Next slide, please. Other student services, the 3,000 series includes the nurses' offices, the health and nursing, pupil transportation, which is primarily in-district transportation, our contract with Holmes Transportation. Also, special education transportation, both in and out of district. For food service, the operating budget only currently supports lunchroom monitors in each of the cafeterias. Everything else is funded through the lunch fees and state and federal reimbursement for the lunch program outside of the budget. And then any other student activities, which are very, very minor here. Most of that's done through other means here. So at this point, we're projecting about an $8,000 shortfall in this area, and that's been triggered by the need to add another lunchroom monitor at the day school. And also, we did have a, some homeless transportation expense, just under $3,000, that was unanticipated. We did not budget for any homeless transportation this year. I will tell you that the projection includes a placeholder for one more special education outplacement. So as we go through the balance of the year, if there's not the need for an outplacement, we should be able to recover this initial projected shortfall. Operations and maintenance, the 4,000 series, again, this is our custodial and maintenance of our facilities, heating and utilities. And as you know, we now, to some extent, share some of the facility maintenance with the town. We share a, both a facility director and an assistant. So there's been some shift. There are, some of our expenses are borne in the town facility budget outside the school committee's budget. And we continue to work with the town to find efficiencies. If we're able to bid certain services for all town buildings versus just our two, you know, the facility directors, you know, going through a lot to have the most economy for the public dollar. I reference extraordinary maintenance, which is a term, if certainly if something came up during the year unforeseen that required significant maintenance. This is the state code area where we would classify that expense. I can tell you that we, for several years, we've not been able to budget anything for this, anything unforeseen. Certainly, this facility is fairly new. We've been here for seven years, I believe, but the day school is certainly showing its age, and from time to time, we have unforeseen maintenance issues that pop up there. And lastly, this area is a bit more robust. You'll see the budget, the actual from a year ago was just under $800,000, and this year's budget is nearly $950,000. And that's because the former district technology in the 1,000 series has been taken into this area as part of the state's reclassification of support for technology. So this is where our staff is, all of our network, infrastructure, support and maintenance, and, what am I forgetting? Staff, yeah, and any sort of district-wide tech support. At this point, we're projecting about a $7,500 shortfall, and this is driven by an unforeseen $16,000 expense to replace and upgrade our firewall under technology. Fixed costs, fixed charges, excuse me, this relates to special retirement, sort of outside the public pension system areas, insurance programs, and any other contractual benefits. This, for our purposes, really deals with retirement buybacks for our teachers and a modest annuity the school committee has contracted with the superintendent. So when you got the initial update back in the fall, we didn't know at that point who might be thinking about retirement. As of December 1st, through the teacher's contract, they've notified us, a few people have notified us of their potential, possible intent to retire. So I think in the fall, I probably projected that we'd expend all of this. Right now, based on what we know, there should be about $9,300. And that may change. You know, again, this is just the intent. It's not necessarily forcing them to retire, or, you know, they're just letting us know they're thinking about it. So it may happen this year, it may happen another year or two out. The next section, the 7,000 series, not much happening here. This is where we would account for major acquisitions and major equipment replacement or equipment acquisition addition to the inventory. Historically, we've never had much budgeted in this area. It's always been in the sort of high $20,000 range, and we've initially had done some things around phone systems and school security, but in the last couple of years, we've been unable to, you know, due to the overall budgetary demands, what we've had to live with, and we haven't been able to budget anything for new equipment. And lastly, the 9,000 series, this represents outplaced tuitions for students that were not able to service in district. These could be placements to another in-state school, a residential program of which we do not have any students currently enrolled, private school or collaborative. And there, as you know, we are members of the BIKO Collaborative. There are other collaboratives that may have special services that we might choose to outplace a student in their best interest. So at this point, we've got one private placeholder that it looks like we're likely not going to expend, so I'm projecting nearly $89,000 of unused budget in this area. And our agreement with the finance committee in town historically has been that they've approved us carrying a placeholder for unexpected outplacement, and we've, you know, committed to them if we don't need to utilize that, that we'll return those funds to the town as best we can to, at the end of the year. So again, this, this projection will be modified as we get closer, as we go through the year.
And at this point, Todd, even if we did have to access a private out-of-district placement for more than half the year.
It would be half the year, that's correct. It would be.
So we should have a balance there.
Yes, thank you, exactly.
What is the amount, 75? Is that what the placeholder amount is?
No, it's close to.
It was 85.
Is it 85?
Yes, the private placement, and the collaborative placements are around 55-ish.
Okay.
Yeah, just to give you a comparison, yeah. And a residential could be, you know, well over six figures.
Got it.
Yeah. And what, in addition, the outplacements very often also require us to transport the students, so that shows back in the 3,000 series. So again, we've got one placeholder in transportation and one in.
What's the placeholder amount in transportation?
I believe it was $35,000.
Which is about the cost for a private.
Got it.
It's usually closer to $10,000 for a collaborative.
Right. So as we work through the rest of the year and tighten this up, and as we look at what we're able to do in next year's budget, we may have some opportunity to take care of a few things this year. Particularly, what first comes to mind is my comment about instructional technology. We've, you know, we've got, we're putting together for the committee a sort of tech inventory and replacement plan, which should be ready next month, and that will give you a better sense visually of, you know, that the, you know. The anticipated annual costs are far outstripping our.
Annual allocation.
Allocation, yeah, thank you. So in summary, at this point, you know, we're projecting to be at 99.25 percent of the allocated budget. Typically, at this time of year, we're just under 99, so we're a little tighter than what we would typically expect through the end of December. But the out-of-district funds certainly give us a little bit of cushion, if you will, or protection. And certainly, if anything changes, you know, we'll keep the committee apprised. We do formally, formal quarterly updates, but certainly, these reports are being done monthly internally.
So I'd assume then, there has been no dramatic change in January, so essentially the same thing holds true?
Yes, yep.
Where we stand?
Yes, yep.
What about the issues with the gymnasium floor and the fire system at HOD and the windows? Is that part of this, or is that just something in the future?
So the fire system at HOD has been fully repaired.
Okay.
So that's, that's in good working order. We had some expenses early in the year. I'm not sure what the window question is.
HOD, remember when Matt took us for a walk-through and he talked about the.
Oh, you had a broken window in the art room?
No, no, no.
Oh.
The cupola.
Yes, that is part of the roof project.
Okay.
That we are working through with MSBA. So we've already purchased the glass for that.
We have purchased it.
Through a grant funding.
Through a state grant.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's covered in this roof project that we're working on now.
Okay, so that's separate from.
That's separate from this because it's funded as a capital.
Like a capital project.
Through the town.
Yes, yes. So just quickly to finish up, so we also have what we refer to as special revenue funds to support other services. We provide federal grants through the Department of Education, state grants specific to the prior question. We've had two special support grants, one to help us with some of the roof project, and more recently, we received a $25,000 support grant around building security. So that was, I believe, through Senator Ross, the second one.
Yes, Senator Ross.
That's for HOD?
And Rep. Dooley.
Yes.
Representative Dooley. That, security funds are being expended.
Security was at, well, it's at both points, actually.
So security, so the $25,000 between the both buildings?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think a little more in this building, if I recall, but there's some for each school. And then the panel on the right just outlines for you some of the self-supporting fee-based programs that do not, hopefully, impact our operating budget. Our food service program, the before and after-school program, preschool tuition, and facilities rentals, which are modest. So this allows us to cover, the preschool allows us to cover some staff, teaching, and instructional aids. And the facilities rental, although it's modest these days, does allow us to take care of things like gym floor refinishing, or painting, or some extra things that we're not able to do through the budget. The gift fund, earlier the committee accepted a couple of gifts tonight. I know the committee has asked that we provide a quarterly update as to the status of the fund. So through December, we've received nearly $21,000 of donations this year. We've initiated expense related to a lot of that, but as of December 31st, we've actually expended $13,000, and there's a balance of just over $40,000, although, although much of it has been committed for teacher-related projects for programs. And some of it is, as you know, sort of not allocated, it's more discretionary for the district, so. And we've typically been hovering at year-end between $25,000 and $30,000 of fund balance. And that's it? I'd take any questions, if you have any, or?
Did we ever, I know there was a bit of a roof leak in the gym here a couple times, that.
It's been repaired. They, it took a while for them to track it and figure out where it was coming from, but they ended up sealing. There were some issues with the stonework and gaps between the stoneworks in the building, and they used caulking to seal all of those, and it had, we haven't had any reports of leaking since.
Okay.
So I think we're in good shape.
And just, so you know, we file an annual financial report with the Department of Ed called the end-of-year financial report, and I just wanted the committee to know, it has to be reviewed by an independent audit firm. Ours has already been, it's due to be filed with the state by March 31st. Ours has already been reviewed and, I believe, filed, and we had no findings for.
For the many consecutive years.
Several consecutive years, which is.
Thank you, Todd.
Yeah, my pleasure.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, I had two other reports for the committee tonight. The first was an update on our strategic plan. We had scheduled for the December meeting, but we had a little copier issue, and you didn't have the full thing in your packet. So tonight, you do, and I'll just walk through it fairly quickly. We're only about four months into phase one of the new strategic plan. In your packet in the front, you have a copy, an overview of the strategic plan, but we have four primary goals. One is around social-emotional learning and promoting well-being in students, staff, and faculty. We have a goal that's around continuing to work on personalizing and individualizing curriculum and focusing on innovation, engineering, STEM kinds of activities. And then we have a goal for professional development, to make sure that we're providing resources and support for teachers as we move forward with new curriculum initiatives. And then the last is around communication and information sharing. Under each goal, we have a series of strategic initiatives and objectives. What you have in your packet is, for each phase, we develop a full action plan for each strategic initiative. And what I've traditionally provided the committee is a copy of the action plan with an update of progress on each item in that. You are missing, I think you took them all. Nope. Well, you're missing the first page of the social-emotional learning objective, so I'll pass that down. Take one and pass it. Our first goal under the community, the first action step under the community wellness goal is to investigate a new social-emotional learning program, primarily with a focus on grades three to six. We have, that initiative's underway. You probably saw in the early part of the fall, we sent home a parent's survey as well as a staff survey to look at what people felt were the strengths and challenges of our current open circle program, how students felt about bullying, and the information parents have received about anti-bullying programs in the district. We've been working with the guidance counselors to analyze that data. We've also looked at the school climate surveys, both Freeman Kennedy and the H. Olive Day School Council sent out. So we have a lot of data. We are in the process of analyzing that and identifying what we see as the strengths and the challenges of our current program, and looking at where we may have gaps. We have also been, there was a study done out of Harvard that has looked at the top 25 social-emotional learning programs, and has done a comprehensive analysis of what the strengths and challenges of each program are, how well they meet the needs of students, how well they align with after-school programs. So we've been poring through that study and comparing it to what we see as our district needs and what the best programs are out there that would meet those needs. So that is well underway. We'll be continuing that work through the spring and hope to have a recommendation to the school committee probably around March, April. The next goal under that objective was, let me just go down a few pages, to take a look, and we started this work last year, but to continue looking at our after-school SAC program and evaluating the needs and resources for SAC to continue to support that safe community of learning in after-school activities. So one of the things that we looked at was hiring inclusion coordinators to support staff in both of those programs, to, with a real focus on supporting some of our students with special educational needs, and knowing how to best modify programs, to provide coaching and training for the support staff in the after-care program. That has been complete. We've also been providing pretty intensive training for SAC members on accommodations for students with different disabilities. That work continues. We're in the process of reviewing disciplinary procedures for SAC staff to make sure that the process is smooth and consistent in terms of how any discipline issues are handled in the after-school setting. We are also, as part of our, looking at the social-emotional learning program. We are looking at a program that would lend itself. We are looking at a program that would lend itself to the after-school setting, and have some resources for them to continue that kind of program and discussions with students in the after-care setting. Once we have that program adopted, you'll see, in March, we anticipate providing, including our SAC staff in the training on the new social-emotional learning and anti-bullying curriculum. We are also working with Tony to conduct surveys with the SAC staff to see what other future professional development training needs they may have. We will also be, in the spring, conducting a survey with SAC parents, just to look at what we see as the strengths of the program and where there may be opportunities for further development. So that goal is also on track. One, third thing that we are anticipating doing, and that'll be probably, we're just getting that started, we did do the initial survey with parents, but we also are, will be looking at, and Roxanne will be working on, sending out a survey to staff to look at what teachers may need in terms of supports and wellness. We have a lot of opportunities through our insurance to bring in courses, stress management, different things for staff, so we're looking at doing a survey to see what the needs are there. We have completed the survey for parents. We've also been working to solicit feedback from the Parent Leaders Group about family and community needs. And we have been working with the REC department to offer and extend programming options for parents on early release days and no-school days. That's been very well received when we've been able to do that. They had full enrollment very quickly for the last professional development day, so we're continuing to work on that partnership. We also will be, again, partnering with our insurance company to offer health wellness programs for staff at each of the school sites. And that's really a Roxanne initiative. So that's on track.
We have some good, good opportunities.
We've had some great programs, and good participation, too.
Roxanne, would you be able to give an example? I'm just curious, what we're doing.
Well, we've had yoga, we've had zumba, we've had mindfulness, we've had-
A sleep one?
Sleep, yeah, the how-to, you know, try to clear your mind so you can sleep, and yeah.
Is that right after school, or do you-
We also had a running club.
We had a running club, that's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we try to offer a couple of programs at least each year.
We have a new coordinator this year, and she seems to be very enthusiastic, and as a matter of fact, I have an appointment, a phone appointment, set up with her to see what opportunities they have for the remainder of this year. We have to work with the town, in conjunction with the town, so we have to be a little careful of what we pick and choose. We've also done a big one on nutrition. That seems to be a very popular one, so stay tuned. We're gonna have something to announce shortly.
The second goal is around curriculum. And again, we're looking to incorporate personalized learning opportunities, innovation, and empowering students to share ownership and have choice in educational programming. One of the goals was to conduct a comprehensive review of the district mathematics curriculum. We started that a little bit early, and that goal is really complete at this point. We did the full review the math committee presented to you in the spring. We've adopted a new core program. We've continued to provide professional development for teachers throughout the course of this year to support that new program, working on realigning some of the assessments. We, again, we, you know, that really is complete and well-implemented at this point. A second curriculum goal is scheduled to begin, actually, in January. We're looking at reviewing our technology curriculum. Again, this work is scheduled to begin in January. The tech team will be working on looking at the curriculum standards, looking at the lessons and the units that they've written, seeing how well-aligned they are, making recommendations for changes. And we will, we expect that that's on track, and we will have the curriculum complete by the end of the school year. We also have been working on writing the science curriculum. Again, the state has put out new science standards, the next-generation science standards, so we've been working on providing training for our science curriculum committee members on how to develop and write curriculum units. We use a model called Understanding by Design, which is really backwards design. You look at what kids have to know, you design the assessment first, and then you backtrack and design the lessons that will best prepare them for success. So we've done that training. The science committee is working on writing those units at this point. Again, they're on schedule with that. We expect, in September 2019, those units will be ready to roll out, and, you know, we'll be on track with that implementation. We also, another curriculum goal that we had, and this is mostly complete, is to establish clear proficiency benchmark and assessment tools for evaluating student performance aligned with the new report card instrument. The curriculum committees have worked really hard on that, and we have, and grade-level data teams also use data team time to take a look at the report card standards, agree on what tools they're using to measure those, what proficiency would look like. So this goal is really basically complete at this point. The one thing that we will be doing, and we have been doing with the new math program, is realigning the assessments and looking at the district benchmarks. We have, and I'll get into it in my next report, we provide the school committee with an annual baseline and benchmark measure. We have in-district measures that we use to look at math performance. We may be changing some of those as a result of the new implementation, so that work is The English Language Arts Committee is also working on curriculum writing. You can see that that's going to be a tiered process. We're going to be writing some of the units around the writing instruction in 2018, next year. And a lot of this work happens over the summer. We'll be continuing to write the full ELA curriculum. So that started. The expectation is that we're writing two curriculum units a year, and again, the committee is well underway with that work at this point. And the last curriculum objective was to implement the new report cards across grades K through six. Again, that goal is really completed. The only action step that we haven't done yet is, at the end of this year, we will be sending out a survey to parents to get feedback, as we did last year at the, we rolled out the K-3 report cards last year. We did a parent survey, we made adjustments based on the results of that. So a survey will go home at the end of the year, the report card committee will meet to look at those results, and we'll make modifications based on that. Under the communication goal, we have a couple of initiatives. One is to develop tools and structures for sharing information about students' instructional needs and progress across teachers and support staff and grade level. We have expanded access for staff to a program called e-Sped, which allows a variety of different staff members to review a child's IEP plan, to review testing, and to be able to access that information quickly in terms of informing their instruction. We're also looking at how we can expand the use of our Baseline Edge Program, which you have had an overview of. It's where we store student information data, as well as teacher evaluation data. So every student has an electronic portfolio that will have all their district benchmarks. We're looking at how to leverage that to include additional sources of data.
Who has access to that?
Only the teacher.
Only the teacher.
The teacher.
The current teacher.
The current teacher, and if a special educator is involved, they log in with the teacher.
Okay.
So that's very, it's a very secure program.
Okay.
We looked at all of that before we put information in. We are also looking at, again, strategies for creating some cross-grade-level meetings so that second-grade teachers and third-grade teachers can meet to share information about students that are departing, with a teacher receiving. And we're looking for opportunities to create those transition meetings, again, between the sixth-grade and the receiving seventh-grade teams. So we're working with KP on that. And so that goal, I think we're on track with. One goal that we are delayed, we had planned to start in September, but we're gonna push it off, actually, we're just getting ready to get this started now, is to develop a comprehensive communication plan and strategy for internal and external communication. We delayed that because we had so many committees in the fall that it was hard to get membership, and we wanted broad membership. But we are going to be looking at, and the other thing that's influencing this is that there's been some recent court results that indicate that social media, if you have a Facebook page for the district, or if you have a Twitter account, all of that is now considered public record, and it has to be archived permanently. So before we roll anything new out, we have to figure out a solution for how we're gonna manage that. So we were looking for some guidance from other districts on that. But our intent is to get a communications subcommittee together. We're gonna work with teachers to look at, people are piloting different communication tools right now, and we're gonna look at what's working well, what parents like, and we'll be doing that work, starting very shortly. And the goal is, with this committee, is to have recommendations for consistent tools and expectations for communication between classroom and parent, classroom, teacher, and parent, but also within the district. Who do you go to for certain kinds of information? How are we managing that? And then determining whether or not we want to move forward with potential social media presence and what that would look like. So that, we are getting started. We have also a goal around looking at a new platform for our district website. The tech team has been working on this. There is a cost implication. A lot of the hosted sites are significantly costly. So what they have decided to do is to stay with the site that we have now, which is free, but to improve its functionality. So they've made a lot of progress with that. Everything on the website currently is current. It's, there's a lot of resources that parents had requested that we've tried to streamline so they're easier to find, but that work is continuing to go forward. And then, the last goal we had under communication, we have reached out to a couple of different parties. It's around developing a logo and branding for the Norfolk Public Schools that aligns with our vision and mission statement. We have a graphic artist on staff that we've approached to see if he'd be interested in developing some potential logos, and then we want to, obviously, incorporate that on district letterhead and the website, so that we are working on, and I expect that we will have that complete by the end of the year as well. Any questions on the strategic plan?
I just have a comment. Back to the website, everybody's using Chromebooks. If teachers just used Google Classroom to upload information and links, and you really wouldn't, in my opinion, need a very fancy website anyway, if people utilized it.
Yeah, that's one of the things we're looking at in terms of communication tools. Other people like things like, you might have heard "Remind Me," which is a different app that parents and teachers can communicate. Google Classroom is one that a lot of people like, but there's quite a few out there, so we've got people piloting, we're looking at ease of access for, you know, if parents don't have Google-
Yeah, I know.
It's a problem.
Yeah.
So we're exploring that, but the goal is, at the end of that, to have a recommendation for at least a few core resources that we'd be expecting people to use. What we used to have was, teachers had individual websites. There are a lot of work to maintain, and we were finding people weren't accessing them. So we're trying to find better tools that are user-friendly and parent-friendly.
Because I know in Franklin, where I work, when you have the teachers, when you have the teachers actually using Google Classroom-
Yeah.
I mean, there are a few, that's the other problem, too, is if you don't have teachers buy into it, you have three out of four teachers on a team using it, and the other one isn't, then, you know, it's a little hard. But if you, if the child is supposed to go to the Google Classroom and look up a homework assignment, or access a link for, or download a document, you're kinda forced to use that.
It's definitely, it definitely is a viable option, and we do have a lot of teachers using it.
That would be my only comment, is just, you know, trying to come up with a policy where everybody buys into it.
Yeah, and that's what the communication, the goal of the communications subcommittee is, to look at what's out there. Now, we may have a range of options for comparable products, but that's one of the goals of the subcommittee, is to come up with guidelines.
Right, I'm not saying ask the Google Classroom.
Right, right. Any other strategic plan questions?
Nope.
Okay. And then the other thing I have for you tonight is the baseline, annual baseline and benchmark report. And the goal of this was to provide the committee with a broader range of data to, so that you, in your roles, can evaluate the progress and the performance of the district. Annually, we do the MCAS presentation, but clearly, there's a lot of other measures of district success than just the MCAS. So what's included in the district benchmark report in the beginning is just demographic data. We typically give a three-year window, so you can kind of track patterns and trends. As far as the demographic data, it has been fairly consistent. There's two things that have shown slight increases. We have an increase in the number of families who are being considered, by the state definition, economically disadvantaged. So we have more students in financial need. That number's been growing steadily from 2015 to 2018. And the other area that we've seen an increase is in our number of students that are categorized as English-language learners. And that has gone from, you know, when I first came here, six or seven years ago, we had one or two, and we're up to about thirty students that are, and there's a formal process for evaluating that, so we have about thirty students, or close to thirty students that are eligible. The other data that we give you is class size. Low class sizes has been a priority for the committee for many, many years. In 2015, and we typically include in our report the communities that the Department of Ed identifies as our comparison communities. So you'll see those, the same communities are used regularly throughout the report. In 2015, 16, we were at the very lower end of class size of the twelve communities. We were second to the last, with lowest class size, with an average of eighteen. That number has, because of the growth in the town of Norfolk, the numbers have gone up. So in 16 and 17, we were closer to the middle of the pack, and in 17 and 18, we are in the, we are fourth from the highest class size of those comparison communities, with an average class size of twenty. So that's gone steadily up. As far as teacher education and experience, a hundred percent of our teachers are licensed in their teaching assignment. We have, eighty-five percent of our teachers have advanced degrees, and over fifty-four percent of our teachers have been with the Norfolk Public Schools for over ten years. We have a very high teacher retention rate. Our three-year retention rate is eighty-two point seven, so it's high compared to the state. Of the five teachers in the last three years that we hired that didn't continue with Norfolk, three were due to relocation. One position was eliminated, and one teacher transferred to another district. So again, we have very high retention rates. Student attendance is also very strong. Our average student attendance rate is ninety-six point seven percent. State average is ninety-four percent, so that's an area of strength. Student discipline, you also have, this is state data that we are required to report, the number of students that we have suspended or with formal discipline is low compared to the comparison communities. In 2015, 16, we only had one suspension. In 2016, 17, there were four, and in 17, 18, there were also four. It doesn't give you detailed information about whether it's in-school or out-of-school suspension. They don't report details for if your subgroup's under six, because it's possible that it would be identifiable. But again, we have very low rates of student discipline. And that's in large part due to, I think we have very strong social-emotional learning programs. We have, we do have an anti-bullying program in place. We have clear criteria. You know, the Bullying Intervention and Prevention Plan is on our website, and that's well-monitored. As far as technology goes, our student-to-device ratio is now one to, almost one to one, one point one. The state average is two. We have computer labs in both schools. We also have mobile devices. We have Chromebooks. We have iPad carts. We have, at the lower grades, we have iPads in every classroom. So it's almost a one-to-one ratio at this point. Budget comparisons, again, with the same communities, in 2015, 16, we were really close to the middle of the group, the comparison group, as far as per pupil expenditure, but that has gone down each year. So in 2016, 17, we were on the lower end, and in 2017 and 18, our per pupil expenditure was at the bottom of the comparison group, with only Berkeley below us, spending less per pupil. Rentham, Sudbury, Plainville, Middleton, Totsfield, Foxborough, Southborough, Concord, Matipoiset, and Lincoln all have higher per pupil costs. MCAS comparison data is also included. You will see, what we report is the percentage of students that are identified as proficient or advanced. In the grade-five science tests, again, our three-year average, we were, in 15, 16, we were close to the top. There was a dip in 16, 17, in 17, 18, slight increase in the percentage of students. So we're close to the middle of the comparison group in terms of science. We are in the process of realigning some of those science units with the next-generation standards and incorporating more STEM activities, so we expect to see that number continue to grow. It's a little harder to provide that three-year trend data with the ELA and math test because there was a period of time where districts were allowed to choose to pilot the park, and when they piloted the park, those, the data was not reported. So when you look at the ELA tests, 15 and 16, we were at the top of the comparison group, but half of those districts took the park, so they only reported five of the comparison district scores. 16 and 17, we saw a drop. Part of that, we felt, was because it was our first time taking the test on computer, and some of our kids struggled with the writing component of the test online, whereas many of those other districts were now in their second year of the online testing. We did see that number increase slightly. We did see that number increase slightly, from 63% to 66% in the last administration. In math, where the computer-based testing didn't have as big an impact, our scores have been pretty steady, and we're in the top quartile of comparison districts in terms of our math achievement. We also report district measures of academic achievement. And this with the adoption of some of our new curriculum, again, we are adjusting what we're using as our district measures. So in terms of the DRA, what we're reporting is the number, a percentage of students that are meeting by the end of the year the district benchmark and expectation for proficiency. We were using the DRA to measure that in 14-15, 15-16, and 16-17. Last year, we transitioned to a different assessment that is quicker to administer, and we feel gives us better data, but it is a little bit more rigorous. So you'll see, in the past, we had about 94% of our kindergarten students meeting expectations. With the new instrument, it was 84%. But again, it's a more rigorous assessment, so we're still establishing what a baseline should be for that. Anita did put in brackets, there were 13% of our students that were one point away from meeting expectations. So we'll, over the next two years, have a better sense of what the baseline on the new assessment should be, and then we can set our targets from there. Let's see. We also have an end-of-year writing benchmark. We have, again, a new rubric that we're using to measure that. So you'll see, there is, it appears that there's a decline, but we have a more rigorous assessment that we're using to measure performance with that. So again, you see the percentage of students under 217 and 18 that meet the new expectation, and then in brackets, students that were one point away. Again, this, last year was a brand-new implementation of a writing program and a new rubric. So after another year's implementation, we'll have a better sense if these are true baseline scores, or if it was an implementation dip with the new program. End-of-year math benchmark, those scores remain strong. We had 100% of our kindergarten students meet the end-of-year benchmark. 90% in first grade, 99% in grade two, 93% in grade three, 92% in grade four, 83% in five, and 76% in grade six. Again, we're looking at, with a new program, possibly identifying a new end-of-year benchmark, so we may be recalibrating those expectations. And then, we have, over the last few years, really focused on fact fluency. It's an important component of students' math success, so we report that data. The data's been pretty flat over the last three years. When we first implemented in 13 and 14, all of the data shows a significant increase. So it's gone, it went up in that first year of implementation, and it stays pretty strong at, you know, depending on the, whether it's addition, subtraction, multiplication. But those scores have been fairly, fairly consistent. We still want to look at increasing fact fluency of multiplication in third grade. That's an area where, where students aren't scoring as well, as well as division fact fluency. So we continue to work on that. We are looking at some additional resources that we may bring in for the upper grades. Students are less fond of reflex math as they get older and older. So we're looking at some additional new resources. The younger kids feel that way. Any questions or comments on the baseline and benchmark report?
I do.
Yes?
So I understand that these are the end-of-year benchmarks. Do they do any midterm?
Yep, we do mid-year benchmarks. I report out to the committee the end of year, but we do mid-year. We do, some of them are three times a year. Sometimes we do a beginning, mid, and end-of-year.
I guess because, and my next question would be, for those who, students not meeting the midterm benchmarks, what strategies are in place to help them besides the classroom teacher doing, you know, trying to pull them aside? Is there any sort of step-by-step?
Some of that is considered when we identify students to receive developmental math support. We're looking at those scores, or to exit out of developmental math. If a student's now meeting benchmarks, sometimes they exit out mid-year. So there's a lot of different strategies and tools that teachers are using. We also are using guided math, so there might be small group instruction. And that's not just based on the beginning and mid-year. That's based on chapter tests, and sometimes kids need reteaching of concepts. So teachers use the assessment data to inform instruction regularly.
And reading, too.
Yep, absolutely. But the benchmarks are used for looking at supplemental developmental services, or whether we might need to refer a child for additional support.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they were, you know, because it's so critical, the K through six.
Absolutely. Again, our teachers meeting data teams monthly, and they're looking at data all the time to determine whether there's additional things that we need to do, or change the type of instruction we're providing.
My last question is, might be more for budget, but it does concern me that we are, it seems to me, we're steadily going lower and lower in terms of what we're spending per pupil.
Per pupil.
And the class sizes, definitely, while it's nice compared to maybe an urban area that we're at 21, but really, I know research shows that 19 is kind of the max of where you want to be, especially when we have such rigorous curriculum across the board, and especially writing. I mean, writing, to work with 20-something kids.
Most of the research is only looked at K to three, and the lower numbers are recommended for K to three. The results from grade three on are really inconsistent in terms of the research literature, but it has been a priority, and we do feel that kids get more individualized attention when you have smaller class sizes. Part of the reason that we provide this information to the school committee, we also, I also provide the financial advisory committee, the full baseline report every year. And this is a talking point that we have discussed in terms of advocating for our budget, our budget numbers, that we are spending less than our comparison community. We're getting a higher return for the dollar in terms of student achievement, but we need to continue to support. And so the last, I think all, all six years, we have had our budget request fully funded at the, at the town. And we've seen increases of 4%, 4 and 1/4, where other districts are not seeing that. I think the reason that our number looks lower in 17 and 18 is we picked up probably, what, 40 students? So you're dividing the total budget by a larger number. And, you know, that is a concern, and we are concerned about the increase in class sizes. We have, we're looking for additional teaching staff next year to accommodate that. But it's important for the town to see the history and the trends in the comparison in order to support that, that request.
Okay, so I was just confirming that you are looking towards decreasing class size.
We try every year. You know, it's been difficult with the budget the last couple of years, but we always, any budget cuts that we've made in the last two years, we have tried to protect the instructional teaching corps. And we've looked at clerical staff, we've looked at other expense lines, and we have made that our priority. So yes, that is, that has been the direction of the committee, and the advisory board has, has supported that. But there's limited revenue as well. So, you know, I think it's important to look long-term and, and look at that impact, and that's why, again, we, we share this information when we're advocating, so that they understand why, where a request for additional teaching staff is coming from.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a easy one. In the event a student is determined not to be meeting benchmarks, whether it's early year, mid-year, end-of-year, that's clearly and effectively communicated to the parent of that student throughout that process as well?
It would be, so it depends, in terms of the fall benchmark, sometimes there's regression that happens over the summer.
Oh, sure, you're right, right. And I understand, like, you take the beginning-of-the-year math test, and it covers.
Yeah, and sometimes, so teachers monitor that. But the beginning-of-year benchmark is used for identifying students for developmental math. It's one of the many factors considered. We also look at the end-of-year assessment from the year prior and teacher recommendation. If a child's identified for additional services, the parent is contacted, and they have to sign agreement that the student's going to be a part of that developmental math. Otherwise, it's communicated in report cards that go out in November if a child's not meeting benchmarks, or, and oftentimes, teachers will reach out and contact a parent in advance and let you know that they're struggling, they might need some additional support with these. So it should be regularly, through multiple sources, communicated to parents.
Wonderful.
Real set?
That's all I have, and I think we're on to policy subcommittee.
We're on to King Philip. First of two, Jeff Currie's.
Go to my dossier.
Please do. We look forward to it.
So let's see. I think we've had two meetings since. So the initial meeting on the 17th of December, they shared a preliminary budget proposal. And it looks like their, their ask is going to be pretty large. I think the initial presentation is, I think it's scheduled for the 4th of February. That's going to be the public hearing.
They have to buy, because it's a regional, they have an earlier timeline, so they have to have their budget, I think, by January 31st.
Okay. And if memory serves me, I think it's going to be somewhere on the order of between 7 and 9%, which they consider, it was kind of an interesting approach. They consider that a level service budget. They consider a level service budget because they have a certain set of fixed costs built in that, for some reason, they didn't spend a lot of time looking at it. But my suggestion, over time, is that maybe at some point, you visit with Paul about some of the savings that we've had, the experience we've had with getting creative, with shared costs with the town. Because I think they may benefit from some of that. Some of the things that I took away was, I think custodial costs of somewhere in the order of 2.2 million for the two schools seemed excessive. They were talking about having, not, not approving $80,000 to have a facilities manager, and those are the types of thing. If they got creative and could hire somebody, then maybe they could get some savings elsewhere. Also, doing some, they were talking about having some outside assessments of, similar to what we did, where we have facilities assessments for, say, the furnace, things that need to be replaced, they were going to have outside consultants in that they felt like they were going to need another $70,000 to $80,000 that wasn't going to be in the budget. But if you did it the right way, you could probably have some shared savings with that person that could maybe do the assessments themselves, so.
Yeah, Todd, we can spend anywhere near that on the, we did a 20-year capital plan for all systems in the two buildings, and I think it was under 10.
Yeah. But there's, it's a really large part of their budget, that it just felt like they just said, this is the cost, and we're not going to look at it. And then they proceeded to say, our level service budget is going to be an ask of 4.25%, the normal ask, on top of this other amount. So it was an interesting approach. Out-of-district tuition is still large, at like 4.4 million. So I said, you know, I mentioned that our experience was building in-house programs can reduce that. I shared our experience. I said, feels like we're in the right direction.
I do think that they have, they're looking, I know they're looking to build a new program in the middle school, and I know they're looking to do some more co-teaching. So there will be an upfront cost, and then the savings comes in the years following.
Well, and that's what was happening, was there was a lot of debate about that. I almost got the feeling that, I wasn't sure if they were going to cut that back, so I reminded them that that number was a really large number, and that seemed to drive some, so. One battle at a time, but hopefully that can go through. But I think if you can kind of get in Paul's ear and share some of the experience that we've had, positive experience with getting creative about sharing costs across different, different areas, that, that would be nice. One other thing that came up is, there just seems to be a shared desire among the towns, and, at least Plainville, and Paul expressed some interest in trying to coordinate the calendars for the schools. So if you can reach out to him on that, that would be great.
We have typically coordinated the three elementaries, and KP hasn't been interested in participating, mostly because some of theirs is contract-driven. They have a, they can't start before Labor Day, per the contract. But Paul has expressed interest in trying to work on that with us. So he's reached out, and we are hoping to coordinate some shared PD days. We have done that with Plainville and Rentham, but to include KP. So we have a meeting on the February 5th, the Tuesday, first Tuesday in February to discuss it.
Okay, excellent. Then the second meeting, then independent auditor shares findings. There were some certain practices with the student activity accounts that they really need to kind of revisit and put some controls in place. Sounds like they've got that in, under, under control. They also reviewed some of the, updated some of the programs and studies, so we reviewed that. I think that's it for us, so.
Moving on to policy.
Policy, I can't remember, is this the first?
We've got a second reading and a third reading.
And there were no changes from the last meeting.
Start with the meal charges, like, I, my brain's a little foggy right now.
This is the second meeting, and there were no recommended changes at the first meeting.
Too cold out to be foggy. Meteorological, I can't speak tonight, forget it. Turn the clock. It's too cold to speak. I said, no, we said, we had no changes in that, so then we just have the?
Third reading.
The third reading for the two, for military children, educational opportunities, and children in foster care, is that correct?
And again, these are heavily legislated policies, and we didn't have any changes from the second reading either.
So in either case, there was any change, right?
Mm-mm.
So, she, do we just want to take a vote, or?
Yeah, we can vote on the zip.
Yeah, all right, so let's, all right, so do we have a motion to accept the policy update to educational opportunities for children in foster care?
Like a motion to accept that policy?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, do we have a motion to accept the updated educational opportunities for military children policy?
Make a motion to accept that policy as well.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that's everything for you then, Jeff, right?
That's it.
All right, we move on to, well, I guess we kind of already did budget, but I don't know if there's anything to add to that beyond what we've discussed.
A quick update that tonight, we'll have another budget subcommittee meeting following this. We'll review prioritized budget requests, discuss other variables that could impact the budget development process, or the actual budget itself, and also talk about some preliminary kindergarten enrollment.
One question I was going to ask, I know, I think Todd had mentioned it, I think you were putting something together, I think it was a technology request for the teachers?
A replacement.
A replacement, and that would be with some of that money that we hopefully still have left available. Is there any thought to, or is there anything pressing in HOD springs to mind that we should potentially put something there as a?
We.
Because it seems like something's always breaking, so I'm asking.
Well, we do, we have in the budget for next year, in the initial proposal, we have some replacement requests for HLD. So smart boards are aging out, they're over 10 years old. We just replaced teacher laptops, but there is some aging wireless hubs and things like that at HLD. So that's included in the request, but what we're, the tech team's working on is a sort of a long-range plan, a five-year capital plan. So we have some, some money in. We, we could certainly replace more next year, so it's a limited request. And as Todd mentioned, based on what we've typically carried for tech replacement annually, we won't keep up with the, with the aging equipment, especially because FK was all built at once, so everything is going to age out.
It's going to go at once, yeah.
So that's why we're trying to develop a long-term plan, so that we can gradually increase the tech replacement budget to keep up with the needs and anticipate where, where it's going to really hit.
Okay. Are there volume discounts for purchasing things like the Chromebooks?
Yes, and we also get E-rate funding for some of our equipment, so that's a reduced rate for schools, for, for a lot of our Chromebooks, and certain things are eligible for E-rate funding.
All right. The reason that I ask is, one of the topics that came up is with budget for middle school and high school, is that they've turned down funding requests for technology for the last four or five years, and they said they're just at bottom right now, and they're kind of critical mass. So I'm wondering if the, the towns can get together and purchase in larger volumes and coordinate, you know, at? and coordinate, you know, at the elementary school level with the middle school and high school.
Yeah, well, they would be eligible for the E-rate funding, which is pretty, pretty discounted.
Okay.
KP's challenge has been that, I mean, their per pupil cost is significantly lower than, than ours is. I mean, they were down at, like, thirteen thousand, they're really low compared to the state. They have some fixed costs that are challenging in terms of regional transportation. So the last several budget years, they have cut any funding for technology. So they aren't keeping up with, with other districts. When, when they have, you know, when you have classroom teaching positions and class sizes of thirty-one or thirty-two, they're putting funding into instruction, and the tech has been cut year after year.
Okay.
And, and they definitely do need to try to address it. I can certainly reach out to Paul, and we can share, you know, where we've been purchasing equipment from. But they're, they're behind in terms of that.
Yeah, they were talking about it from the standpoint of, you know, needing to administer the tests and take the tests.
Yeah.
But even their infrastructure is tough with Wi-Fi, so.
Yeah, they, they have a significant need for, for technology funding, I would say.
Anything else on budget?
No, that's it.
Okay. Just moving on, so just need to approve the minutes for our last meeting, excuse me, on December eleventh?
It's catchy.
It is catchy, everyone is down, it's the inability to speak at this meeting. So it's about time we wrap this up.
It's the cold.
So do we have a motion to accept the minutes from the December eleventh meeting? I say it slowly, it works out.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I'll second.
She just saved you. I say, assuming no further discussion?
That's to cut me off.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we're looking at our next meeting, February twelfth, does that work for everyone?
Isn't that, is that Paul's anniversary?
No, 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 I'm August.
Oh, it's mine.
Oh, okay. I thought somebody said that it was their anniversary last time.
You sure about this answer?
She can't talk either.
It's either eleventh or thirteenth, it's a minus count for that, so. They would have fixed that, so. All right, well, I think that's all said, anybody else have anything else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.